If you send that to my personal email, I probably won't be able to open it. That was your point.
I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday, July twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty five at seven P M. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Mount Pleasant City Commission recognizes Anishinaabe, whose ancestral lands the city stands upon today. We acknowledge the Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe and recognize that the three bands of Ojibwe, Saginaw, Black River, and Swan Creek have resided on this land for over two hundred years. Our acknowledgement of the full history of the tribe and our commitment to be good stewards of these ancestral lands is an expression of gratitude and appreciation to those ancestors who came before us. We give thanks to the generous care with which the Anishinaabe and those members of Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe of Michigan have given and continue to give to this land and our community. Clerk Holly Schmelzer, please take the role.
Commissioner Alsager?
Here.
Commissioner Bush?
Here.
Commissioner Persha Bacher?
Here.
Commissioner Rollins?
Here.
Commissioner Zhang?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Here.
Mayor Wingard?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we shall move into proclamations and presentations. And to begin, I have a proclamation recognizing Parks and Recreation Month. Whereas Parks and Recreation is an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the city of Mount Pleasant. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes health and wellness, improving the physical and mental health of people who live near parks. And whereas Parks and Recreation promotes time spent in nature, which positively impacts mental health by increasing cognitive performance and well-being and alleviating illnesses such as depression, attention deficit disorders, and Alzheimer's. And whereas Parks and Recreation encourages physical activities by providing space for popular sports, hiking trails, swimming pools, and many other activities designed to promote active lifestyles. And whereas Parks and Recreation is a leading provider of healthy meals, nutrition services, and education. And whereas Parks and Recreation programming and education activities, such as out-of-school time programming, youth sports, and environmental education, are critical to childhood development. And whereas Parks and Recreation increases a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas Parks and Recreation is fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community. And whereas Parks and Recreation is essential and adaptable infrastructure that makes our communities resilient in the face of natural disasters and climate change. And whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month. And whereas the city of Mount Pleasant recognizes the benefits derived from Parks and Recreation resources. Now, therefore, I, Boomer Wingard, Mayor of the city of Mount Pleasant, do hereby proclaim July, two thousand and twenty-five, as Parks and Recreation Month in Mount Pleasant. And witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and great seal of the city of Mount Pleasant, Michigan, this twenty-eighth day of July, two thousand and twenty-five. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have a presentation on the two thousand and twenty-four comprehensive annual financial audit.
Hello, I'm Lauren Pavlowski, and I do have our auditor Doug on the line as well with us. He's on Zoom. He should be able to help walk us through the annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year two thousand and twenty-four, ending December thirty first.
All right, good evening. Happy to be here. There we go. Okay, thank you. I I reported to you last month that the audit was still ongoing. Staff has been working very hard to catch up since the new finance staff has been in place. The audit was extended from its original due date of June thirty to July thirty first. The bank reconciliations were one of the big things that we were waiting for. They've gone through several revisions with the most recent adjustments to them we just received today. So they've been incorporated into these financial statements, the adjustments they have. So hopefully, we're all we're all setting up to date. The next step in this process will be a thorough review by your finance director and by us on our side, just to make sure everything ties out and is is a hundred percent correct. We do anticipate having that completed and filed by July thirty first, which is coming right up. Last year, you did receive the GFOA certificate of excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, and that is included in this report. And we anticipate that this report will again qualify for that that award. Just a couple of the big items, you can go to page one, Lauren, if you're paging that. A couple of the big items that happened during the year, the there was continuing work done on the the city's clean water plan through both grant and bond project was ongoing. The city did prepay ahead of time for two new fire trucks. By prepaying for them ahead of their their completion, you saved about three hundred and seventy thousand dollars in charges, so that you got a nice discount for paying in advance. And then there was money recognized for ARPA funds resulting in a single audit this year. So the opinion on the financial statements, which is here on page one, right at the top of the page, is the top of the page, there you go. So it says, the second paragraph there just says, in our opinion, the financial statements present fairly in all material respects the financial position of the city. So that's a a good unmodified report. After all this that was done and the adjustments that were made, we can issue a good, clean report. And that's that's always good to have when you have an audit done. In addition to this report, which we'll get to, we also expanded the the audit to include both the yellow book audit, it's called, generally accepted government auditing standards, as well as a single audit over your federal funds specifically. So that's that's way in the back, so I won't make you a page back and forth, but we'll get there. So if you just go to page twenty, I'm just going to point out just a few of the numbers. This report is divided into various sections, the introductory section, the financial section, which is where the opinion starts, and then the statistical and single audit sections. So I'm just going to jump right to the the governmental funds balance sheet here and concentrate primarily on the general fund. On page twenty, you can see right at the bottom of the page, your unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, at the end of December, was eleven point two million, which is about sixty percent of annual expenditures. That is a little higher than it has been in the past because with the new staff and staff turnover, there just wasn't time to thoroughly go through and and assign different for different projects, assigned fund balances and that kind of thing. So it is currently in unassigned. And then also, the next column over is just the major street funds. And there's about one point three million available there. There's also a local street fund, which is a non-major, and there's about one point one million available there. So the Act fifty-one money is in the street funds, so that's all in good shape as well. And then on page twenty-two, you can see the that's the income statement for the general fund on the left-hand column. You can see it increased from the previous year by about three point four million. So that's that's a good increase. And I hate to have you do it, but page seventy-five is is the budget and actual report. Don't get dizzy if you choose to go there. But there there were just just wanted to point out there were just a few items overspent on page seventy-five.
Right there. Nice.
And then this is just the expenditures comparing the budget to actual amounts within the general fund. And you can see there's some bracketed amounts in the right-hand column. Those are over expenditures, which we will have to report to the state, and they've been included in the report on in footnote number two. But none of these meet the criteria where the state will require additional explanation or scrutiny. They have a ten percent variance there, so nothing to that you'll have to report further to the state on. And then the enterprise fund, sorry to go back to page twenty-four. Just on the, this is the enterprise funds balance sheet. And just to point out there, there's a there's ongoing work in the the clean water fund on the plant. And you can see there's construction in progress of about thirty million there, right, about six or eight lines down from the top, construction in progress, just over thirty million. And that's all all being funded with some cash and mostly an increase in bonds, bond funding, as well as SRF draws on that, as well as some grant revenue from ARPA money that the state gave to the city. So that's that's ongoing at year end. And then on page twenty-five, you can see kind of the results to that grant funding. That's the next page. And near near the bottom of the page, you can see there's capital outlay. It's about seven point four million there. That's that's grant money that you received for part of that that construction project. Other than that, the enterprise funds do stay in in good shape from both the bottom line and from the 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 investment or the available fund balance amounts. Sorry, I was looking at my notes. And then also, I just wanted to point out your pension funding. I saw you have a bunch of presentations on that. That's always a lot of fun. But on page sixty-five and sixty-seven are your two pension. You have both a merged pension for the general employees, as well as the Act three forty-five pension for police and fire. And that's found on page sixty-five. There we go. And the the left-hand column is your two thousand and twenty-four numbers, and you can see there and the near the bottom, the funding is at sixty-seven and a half percent. So that's that's good, decent funding at least. I mean, and then page sixty-seven, the Act three forty-five, yeah, you can see that that one is at eighty-five point three percent funded. So both the plans are actually in pretty decent shape. And then we'll get to the single audit. If you go to way to page one oh nine, there's two additional reports. The report on page one oh nine is in accordance with the generally accepted government auditing standards, and it's a report on internal and compliance at the financial statement level. We did have to report two issues in here that are noted as material weaknesses. One, one regarding the amount of journal entries we had to we discovered and posted, and the other related to the cash balance not being reconciled on a timely basis. So those are two very important things, so we have to report those as material weaknesses. And then on page one eleven, it's an additional report on internal control and compliance over federal funds. We have to select the major federal programs to look at each year. And there was one issue reported, and that was regarding the federal grant policies that have to be in place, which weren't. We did discuss this with city staff last year. It did not get done due to the significant amount of turnover within the finance office or treasurer's office. So that didn't happen. We had to repeat it again this year, so hopefully, we can get that taken care of this year. And just by way of the federal funds, that's on page one fifteen. Yes, substantially ARPA money that was received, but in total, you did receive just over ten million dollars in federal grant dollars to to help the city with various projects and and so forth ongoing. Lauren, was there anything else that you had or wanted me to cover? That was what I some of the the big things I just wanted to make sure were pointed out. If there's any other items or questions, I'm happy to address those.
I don't have any more to add at this time.
Answer question. You you indicate you fixed some erroneous journal entries. How many were there like that?
There was a you can go ahead, Doug.
Well, no, go ahead, please. I I don't have the exact number, but we did find many things that weren't needed to be reconciled yet and journal entries that has to had to be posted after we started the audit.
I honestly, I don't have an actual number for you on this because I didn't count that total before I came down here, but I know alone today I did about eight of them to fix up some issues. So that, over the course of the last three months that I've been working on a regular basis, I would say there was probably close to sixty or seventy journal entries that had needed to be depleted just for the one cash account.
For those of us laypeople, could you define journal entries a bit more?
A journal entry records the transaction, the cash that's moving between the different accounts within the general ledger. So every time that you have a bank deposit, you need to do a journal entry to make sure that's in there. Some of them are automatic, other ones require manual entry. So there's always some sort of record on what's going on, and that's what a journal entry is. It's just the record within the system to keep track of what we're doing.
So the errors that occurred on recording them, it's either they're not could you define, like, what was that an error look like for one of them?
Some errors could be that it's an error of omission where they were not done, that somehow it got overlooked, and that's what the bank reconciliations are for, is to make sure that we're catching everything as it goes through. Others could be that when they posted it, it went to one account when it should have gone to another account, whether that is a transposition error in the journal entry number itself, or if that was something where, you know, just when they thought through it, they put down one number and it could have been better defined in another.
And with an organization as large as ours, we have many accounts across different institutions and
Yes. And say roughly, we have about fifteen hundred accounts.
Thank you. Other questions from the commission?
I
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
The mayor has asked, first of all, thank you for the presentation. Okay, this is a lot. I'm just wondering the extent to which these gaps might be problematic for us. Should we should we be concerned? I mean, I I hear Doug saying maybe not, but, uh, you know, I'm kind of
Realistically, I can see where you would have that concern to an extent. We did have some significant transit transition in the finance department for the last year, I will say. I came in in January second, and I know that since I have come in, I've been doing a lot of learning and double-checking everything. Going forward, I can actually go back right now to the current fiscal year we're in right now and make sure that we don't have those gaps at the end of the fiscal year that we're in right now. So by December of two thousand and twenty-five, we won't have any of those gaps because I'm going to go through and double-check everything from what I've learned from this audit itself. So basically, I'm taking this as my learning opportunity to get very familiar with the city of Mount Pleasant and their finances, and thanks to the way that this was set up, I have gotten very familiar with it. So going forward, I can actually address the issues before they come up.
Okay, so you
Yes.
Okay, so what we're looking at are entries for the previous year.
Yes.
Did you take a peek at the year before the preceding year?
I did not go back that far and actually scrutinize the data. I was only looking at the current year just based on timing. So that will be something that, as I look through it, I will be referencing back because that's my best source of data, is looking back into prior years. And as we said about a month ago, that we don't suspect any fraud or any issues like that. It's just bad accounting that's not matching up with current best practices. So it's just fixing that side of things. Do I think that there's anything that's too far back? No, I just think there was a lot of transition at the end of the year, and that's where a lot of our journal entries came in, was the end of two thousand and twenty-four, so starting about July timeframe and forward.
Okay, well, I'm I am glad that you're doing this, and I hope you take a peek at previous years, just, you know, just to reconcile things. I I, you know, I, you know.
I will double-check those when I get time.
Yeah, thank you.
Other members of the
Can I add one thing to to the answer? We just, you started, your staff transition started back in, I believe, July of two thousand and twenty-four. So that's when some of the bank reconciliations didn't get start not getting completed. And the staff that stayed in place wasn't able to get those caught up. When Lauren started and right after fiscal year end, the she ended up having to catch up those last six months of of bank reconciliations, and there was others brought in to help do that, and it was it was it was just a big mess. So it's very, very important to stay on top of the bank reconciliation process, to get those done, get all the entries made each month in accordance with those reconciliations.
Okay, thank you for adding that information.
Other members of the commission who have not had a chance to speak yet before we get repeat questions and I think Commissioner Zhang?
First, let me thank you. I think you are doing a good job of getting that getting caught up there. That's good. But one of the things that Doug mentioned on page one eleven, that there was in two thousand and twenty-three, we we said there was going to be grant policies put in place, but because of the significant turnover, that didn't happen. Do you feel confident that we'll fix that before the next time?
That one is one that I know for a fact we can fix without a problem. It is just a written procedure that just needs to be followed. We've started following it since it's been pointed out in this audit, and I've been able to track that down. We just need to finalize our written procedures for it.
Thank you.
I had one other question for discussion to ask. It would be on page one page one seventeen, under section two, the financial statement findings. So it goes back to general ledger. I I believe it goes back, yeah, the general ledger balances different, so working with recommendation, the city should develop and implement procedures to review and reconcile general ledger account balances for consistency with gap. Management response, management has determined is more cost-effective to rely on external auditors to complete these entries rather than incur the time and expense of additional training expertise needed to complete these entries. Wanted to find a bit of like thought there because it not that it's not an acceptable strategy or anything, I just I as much as we can build up our staff and invest in training, I think that might be a worthwhile investment or something we could look at our goals and objectives potentially for next year.
That is something that I'll definitely keep on my radar, and I'm sure that some of the information they have related to that has to do with some of their OPEB and similar calculations that are very complex, but it's something that we can definitely look into figuring out how to do ourselves.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think anytime we can invest in staff training and education, I think it's a worthwhile investment there.
Other questions from the commission before we end the presentation?
I have just a minor one. Maybe, so this is at page seventy-five. I noticed an entry there on something to do with culture and recreation. What are we talking about? It's almost at the end, like the penultimate entry, culture and recreation parks?
Yeah, that's just that I believe that's just the name of the department under which parks falls. There's various functions within the government, and one of those standard wording functions is culture and recreation. So that's that's just all the parks expenditures.
Okay, yeah, so I usually thought parks and recreation, what if there was a culture and recreation, which sort of blew me off. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Lauren. Appreciate the hard work that went into this. Thank you, Doug, for your presentation as well.
Yeah.
Okay, that brings us to our next presentation. We will be having a presentation by GRS Consulting, Actuary Casey Albrand Rains. Let's see. Aaron, do you want to tee us up on this? Explain why Paul's laughing a little bit or Chuck.
I think that's, Mary, you really said it best. So Casey's here from GRS Consulting. He's going to talk to us about our three forty five actuarial, talk about everything that happened in twenty twenty four related to the pension program. And with that, I can turn it over to Casey.
Thank you, Aaron. I just want to say it's a real pleasure to be here, not just because we had a very severe thunderstorm in Detroit, and that was in my rearview mirror. It's beautiful here. But also because this is an incredibly refreshing scene to get to be a part of. As someone who gives presentations to municipal employees, pension boards of trustees, you know, people who generally just have to be there, don't necessarily want to be there. It's really cool to be in a place where people are actually having discussions about things that are incredibly important. And that's often not the case, especially when we're talking about any kind of employee benefits, retirement benefits. Too often, the discussion begins when there's a problem. And then everyone's talking about and say, who? Who, who did this? What, what could we have done? Well, the answer is this. I loved the question earlier from one of the commissioners, should we be concerned? It's an excellent question because there's no way you can know all of the stuff, all of the numbers. There's a, I don't even know how many pages are in this report, and I send it to Lauren, and I'm always disappointed that no one asks me any questions about it. But she looks in here for the information that's important, and she relies on my guidance. Should we be concerned? That's the most important question that we can ask. Spoiler alert. No, you should, you don't need to be concerned, but it's a, it's a very important question to dive into. So I get very excited about these things. Don't mistake my enthusiasm for flippants. I assure you, I take it very seriously. But I, in my experience, and I've been told that people tend to remember ten percent of things that are said during a presentation. If I can get fifteen percent, I'll be excited about that. So with that, as Aaron said, I'm here to discuss the valuation results as of December thirty first, twenty twenty four, for the Act three forty five plan, also known as the Fire and Police Pension Plan. So what is an actuary? Not a trivia question, just kind of something I'm sure is kind of going through everyone's head right now. Well, they're the, one of those people that no one really thinks about when they're a kid, but when you're an adult, you realize there's people sitting in rooms doing things that kind of, you know, you have to look at every once in a while, and that's us. And probably the most tangible thing that we do is calculate a contribution rate for pension funds, which in this case is for the Act three forty five pension fund. Spoiler alert, just somewhere in the neighborhood of one million dollars for this year. But that is for most people, the principal result that we calculate. Usually we say that, eyes glaze over, we say a bunch of other stuff, and that becomes part of the ten percent that people remember, and that's okay. As long as people are listening to that part. And then in order of, you know, spiciest from spicy to least spicy, we also want to measure the the funding position. There's a lot of talk about funded ratios, the funded position. People talk about social security, how underfunded it is, but what does that actually mean? We're measuring something, but what goes into this measurement? And then we want to annualize, analyze actuarial experience. Get to that in a little bit, and then discuss the risks, probably not as exciting as it sounds. Actuarial matters move quite slow. Slowly, compared to things like investment matters, but nevertheless, there are risks that need to be monitored. And with that, I'm going to kind of jump into a very high level, and thank you for letting me be first, because I'm going to keep it very, very basic. Because I know on boards of trustees, there are often newer folks. I recognize some faces, some new faces, new staff. We're doing a great job, by the way. But I want to keep it very, very, oh, should I make this full screen? Ah, doesn't matter. So if you zoom out over a hundred years, all the pension benefits that got paid over that century came from somewhere. Money doesn't grow on trees, right? Originally, someone started contributing to a pension fund. I said, yeah, you know what? We can invest this money. That money starts growing based on what's in the fund, diversified portfolio, generally in these circumstances in the neighborhood of seventy percent stocks, thirty percent bonds, which is the case for this plan. And the money that actually goes to pay the pensions, in most cases, most of it comes from returns from the stock market, from the bond market, things of that nature. So this is not necessarily to scale. I think in the case of this plan, this fund, more than half of the actual benefits that are getting paid come from investment return. I think that is a very principle principle to keep in mind when we're talking about all of these things, that the engine that drives the pension fund in many regards, the wind and the sails, if you will, is the investment returns. And so I just kind of want to look at what happens in a pension fund. So in any given year, in this case, December thirty first, twenty twenty four, you have a certain amount of money that's in the fund. In this case, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of thirty five million dollars. Some of that money is made up of contributions that took place in the past. Some of that money is made up of investment return that grew from those contributions. And also from investment return from the past, but anyway, you get the idea. The future money that's going to come into the plan will come from investment returns in the future, or it will come from contributions in the future. Our job is to figure out how much needs to be contributed so that the juice is worth the squeeze, so that we're getting the investment returns that we need to get. We don't determine the portfolio or anything like that. You have investment consultants who who deal with things like that, but our primary objective is to deal with the contributions that go into the plan. How much money has to go into the piggy bank? And so just to keep it very simple, as I said, but just to kind of explain the complexity that goes into the calculations while keeping it simple. In any given year, you have a contribution that goes in. This year, just somewhere in the neighborhood of nine hundred thousand. And then you have benefits that are going out throughout the year. In this case, somewhere in the neighborhood of two point five million dollars. Now, I'll point out to you that this is not to scale because the investment income that occurred during this last calendar year, during this last fiscal year was in excess of four million dollars. So contribution just under a million going in, two point five in benefits going out. Growth of four million dollars. So that, so that really tells you that, okay, we had more benefits going out than contributions going in, and that's kind of a demographic matter. We'll get to that in a little bit. But the investment return is really driving the car in this circumstance. So now that I did my little primer, I'm going to get into the main results. It's a table of numbers. I know. I know. Promise I wasn't going to say too many numbers, but it's really unavoidable. Otherwise, I'm not doing my job. So we had actuarial liabilities, to be specific, actuarially accrued liabilities, just over forty million dollars, which was an increase from the prior year, just under forty million dollars, but that's what you expect. These are benefits that are based on pay, often a percentage of pay, in this case, two and a half percent, assuming that they meet the retirement eligibility conditions. Pay increases, people get closer to receiving benefits, liability goes up. That's what you expect. Thankfully, we also expect that assets are going to increase, which in this case, they did. So both of those amounts went up just in the neighborhood of three and change percent. And then basically what we do to assess the funding position is we take the difference between those two numbers, and that gives you the unfunded liability. Taking the ratio between our assets and our liability gives us a funded ratio, which I think Doug was his name, our auditor, mentioned for this particular claim was in the neighborhood of eighty four percent. So I think the number that he mentioned was on a market value basis. We're dealing with an actuarial value basis. Not really that different in this particular circumstance. Get to that in a little bit, but nevertheless, this is incredibly refreshing. I love coming to talk to people about a pension fund that's over eighty percent funded. Now, there's some degree of subjectivity in talking about what eighty percent funded means, because of course, we're talking about benefits that are going to take place in the future. There's a lot of assumptions that we have to use. Likelitudes of people surviving to certain ages, likelihoods of people retiring, the assumed rate of investment return, which is just shy of seven percent, is a principal actuarial assumption that goes into baking that forty one point one million dollar number. So I don't want people to look at that number and say, no, that is eighty percent funded. It is a measure for how funded the pension system is. Every pension system has different assumptions. Most of them are in the ballpark, especially nowadays with Public Act two oh two, which kind of gave people a little bit of a benchmark in terms of where their assumptions should be. I'll throw that in quotes. But I think the assumptions that we're using for this particular pension plan are right in line with any pension plan that you would ever see and are neither too conservative nor too optimistic, of course, in our opinion. And we're held to certain standards of practice and all that, yada, yada, yada. Okay, so now we've assessed the funding position of the plan. Now, the number that people care about, in my experience, the contribution rate. So I'm not going to get into it a whole lot, but the contribution rate is generally made up of two components. One of them is kind of the ongoing cost of an active member of an employee accruing another year of service. That's called the normal cost. I didn't call it that. That's just the name they picked. Nothing normal about it, but that's what it's called. So in this case, most of that normal cost is going to go to fund the future benefit of an active member who is going to most likely retire under the agent service conditions and get the two and a half percent multiplier. And most of that sixteen point two seven percent employer rate, mind you, that is already net of the five percent member rate. That is what's going to the current active members to fund their benefit, and that is a percent of payroll contribution. And in my experience, that's a fairly normal amount considering the multiplier. The other component of the contribution is the amount to amortize the unfunded liabilities. So what I was saying before, you take the difference between your assets and your liabilities. That's kind of the amount that you need to catch up a little bit. So that's six point six million that we're talking about. We take that and we basically treat it like the outstanding balance on a mortgage. And as we, most of us know, mortgage has periods, and every year that period goes down. Right now, the period that we're working with is twenty years, and that yields a payment of just in the neighborhood of thirteen and a half percent. And I will just add that we amortize that as a percent of active member payroll because we have a level, a level active employee population, which is a good thing because that means that we have a city and we're not having issues with retention. I'm sure there are issues with retention. You know, just kind of broadly speaking, but there have been forty active members since I've been working on the plan for the last ten years and twenty years before that, there have been somewhere in the neighborhood of forty active members. So this allows us to say, hey, payroll's going to go up by a certain amount each year. Let's develop a percent of payroll contribution. Dang it. Sorry about that. This is a good time to take a breather. Does anybody have any questions? While I wait for my thing to get back up on there. What do I got to do to get it back? Okay, hearing none. We develop our percent of payroll contribution rate, which is in the neighborhood of thirty percent of pay. And I'm not sure of the extent to which the number actually gets used, because generally with Act three forty five plans, you have a property tax millage, which is the primary funding mechanism of these things. So I think the percent of payroll number is mostly informational, as far as I know. But we're somewhere in the neighborhood of one million dollars, as I alluded to before. So I know we're all just blown away right now by the stimulation of these results that I've just discussed. But if there are any questions before, or I don't know, should I wrap this up? Or do I have a little bit more time? Did I have fifteen minutes? Okay, okay. I'm just going to keep looking at Aaron. He's just going to let me know when to when to turn it down, start the string, the strings. Okay, so part of the nature of kind of this actuarial exercise is that we have data from the data we generate results, you know, the final financial information. We assess a status, which is this unfunded actuarial liability. And then we have expectations, which are based on probabilities, projections, dah 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 dah. And so anytime an actuary gives you any kind of result, you should always grill them and say, well, how did that compare to what you expected? And in this case, I would say, well, it was pretty close. We had an actuarial loss, I'll throw that in quotes, of point two million dollars, so two hundred thousand dollars. And that's basically saying we expected the unfunded liability to be six point four million. It's actually six point six million. And the difference is just, you know, deviation, statistical noise, if you want to call it that. Had fairly strong investment returns, like I said, the actual accrual from the investments from one year to the next, in excess of four million dollars, that shook out to on our smoothed basis, somewhere in the neighborhood of nine percent. That's just kind of our rough number. But to kind of take that actuarial loss and compare it to prior years, you can see it's kind of it kind of pales in comparison to the swings that you can see in these results. So I mean, twenty twenty two, let's face it, it was a rough year for everybody. No one was really, knew, knew what was going to go on with the markets. We just rode it out. Years after that was a little bit better, but part of what we do so that we can kind of smooth out the volatility in the market is we generate something called the actuarial value of assets, which serves as effectively moving average of the market value, which bounces around a lot. You can see in twenty twenty two, went down, subsequent years it went up. And as I said before, our kind of smooth value is approximately equal to the volatile market value. Just kind of one point about the benefits going in and the contributions, benefits going out, contributions coming in. Obviously, when you start a pension plan, you don't have any retirees. You got a lot of active people, you know, you're promising them a benefit. You hope, you know, that you need to know how much to contribute. Fun fact, when security started, the contribution rate was in the neighborhood of one percent. I think we all know what it's in the neighborhood of now, but I'm not going to get into that. But the point there is that we don't necessarily know how much we need to contribute because these things have yet to come to fruition. Eventually, when you have a pension plan such as this, an open pension plan, you reach some sort of a point of stability, equilibrium, if you will. And that's approximately when you have two thirds as many actives as you do retirees. So in this case, we're talking about benefit recipients just shy of sixty actual individuals. And as I said, an active population somewhere in the neighborhood of forty, so that's pretty much two thirds. And it pretty much stays there because unfortunately, people do die. So the retirees that you have, you know, that's there's going to be new people, there's going to be people who step aside, and that's just kind of the nature of it. Just kind of looking at the benefits that I was talking about, two point five million in the neighborhood, benefits going out every year. That might sound like a lot. I mean, that is a lot of ice cream sandwiches. But when you kind of look at the distribution, the younger folks, because just of the nature of pay and, you know, real wage increases, they actually have much larger benefits. The older folks have much less in the way of benefits, so that's what the distribution looks like in terms of the age distribution and the benefits for those individuals. You'll see a lot of humps in these distributions. That's because we're dealing with a fairly small population. Normally, you'd see some sort of localized bell curve, or maybe some kind of sloping skewed distribution. That's just the nature of kind of a smaller plan, and also the fact that recruitment and retirement tends to come in waves. So that's just kind of an interesting thing you can see in these visualizations of the data, also with the active members. You can kind of see, you know, there was probably slews of people retiring, and by slews, I mean two. And then you had people come in to replace them, and so that's why you have different homes at different places. But every plan is different, everyone's body is different. That's just how it is. With that, I will end the presentation and say, once again, say thank you so much for doing what you're doing, all of you. You have wonderful staff working on your behalf, and it's a pleasure to get to join you for this, and I hope I get to come again. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you. We have a question from.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
So first of all, thank you. I actually tried to read through this, and I was completely disoriented too much for me.
Yeah, I hear you.
So I, I did, I did, and so it makes better sense right now that you're talking. But let's say hypothetically, right? So you're projecting what might constitute or pose a threat?
Oh, sorry, you're asking me in what I'm.
Yeah, 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 you know, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. So what might, you know, so you're saying to us, this is, so we're looking at, you know, eighty percent funded. And you're projecting, you're saying to me, this is good. Don't worry, don't worry. And well, everything is volatile right now. And well, everything is volatile right now, so from your perspective as an actuary. You know, what might constitute a threat? Where do you see potential threat?
So you're kind of saying what hypothetical scenario might.
Yeah.
Cause one to be concerned, using your words.
Yeah, so use the right.
Yeah, yeah, that's a great question, um because there's, like I said, there's a de- degree of ambiguity in. Is eighty percent funded? Is eighty five percent funded? Why isn't it a hundred percent funded? And that's a terrific question because it is kind of a moving target. Um and I'll just kind of slowly nuance. Um by saying that our assumed rate of investment return has been going down each decade for the last thirty years. In the nineties, a lot of plans had an eight and a half, nine percent assumed rate of return, and if you have a higher return assumption. Your liabilities are down, and this plan was overfunded, and I'll throw that in quotes, for quite a long time. Largely a result of that assumed rate of investment return. Now, you know, kind of a product of a lot of things, um I'll say, you know, actions of the Federal Reserve, uh interest rates. If you're not earning ten percent on a money market account, you're not making as much money. So slowly, these. Capital market assumptions, we call them, started to come down to about the level where they're at right now, and we're just at a point where this is starting to tick up. Where seven is kind of um kind of the sweet spot. And so I I like to just leave it, but to your point. The largest source of risk is deviations. In this is in this actual rate of investment return. To the extent that they are different from what we projected. So if we projected something in the neighborhood of seven and you had a negative fifteen. Which actually happened in twenty twenty two, right? That happened. But then, it's kind of the nature of these things, it bounced right back. And so. I guess I would say that's an illustration of what can go wrong and why just kind of sticking to the plan. Um can sometimes just be the answer, uh and I I it might not be as satisfying of an answer, but. That's just ki- it the the framework within which this pension actuarial stuff exists is built for things like that. Two thousand eight, obviously, things like that can happen, and that's the extent to which it rebounds after that. Um uh I guess I would say um. But the most principal danger that I have witnessed, and you see it in other states, not in Michigan. Most principal danger I have witnessed in my career is that people don't take it seriously. They look at our contribution, they say, hey. We can beat seven percent. You're just being too conservative. And there are actually some states, I'm not gonna name any names, but they have a a, you know, a shore on. Uh Lake Michigan, um where the funding target is actually ninety percent and not a hundred percent. And a lot of their pension funds are not doing so well. So that's just kind of an illustration of. What can go wrong if you're not listening to the guidance of the experts? Um on the other hand, things like mortality, demographic, those are slow-moving risks. And not as much of a concern, but really the volatility in investment markets is the principal risk. Um but generally, these storms have been weathered in the past. But that was a really long answer to a very good question, but I I appreciate it. I hope that answers your question.
Thank you, thank you.
Mission Rusing?
Casey, on your April eighth memo to the retirement board. Uh it the part of that packet. Uh I I don't know if you have it in front of you.
I do, actually, yes.
Could you read that second paragraph? This goes back to your opening comments of should we be concerned? And so if you could just read that and comment on that.
Uh so you mean on the on the transmittal letter of the the cover letter of the the valuation report?
Yeah.
One that reads, the computed contribution rate shown on page B one may be considered as a minimum contribution. Rate that complies with the board's funding policy. Users of this report should be aware that contributions. Made at that rate do not guarantee benefit security, kind of to the point that we were just discussing. Uh given the importance of benefit security to any retirement system, we suggest that contributions uh to the system in excess of those per in excess of those. Uh presented in this report be considered, and I'll underline considered. Uh cause not to say that we're recommending that uh contributions in excess of those presented in this report be made. That they be considered, you know, given the overall. Um I'm not as aware of the budgetary restraints of the city, of the pressure. That this millage rate uh has on the taxpayers of the city. So it's not really for me to say, hey, this is the contribution rate we calculated based on. The parameters that I've set forth, you know, the twenty year amortization period, the set of assumptions. Um all I can do is calculate that rate and say, hey, there are technically still unfunded liabilities. You could contribute more, some systems certainly do. Um but if unless a plan is a hundred and twenty percent funded. And there's and there are no active members and there's like two retirees that are age eighty. Uh I'm generally going to always err on the side of conservatism and say. You never know what could happen. Um it's better to contribute more now. Than it is to contribute less now and have to catch up in the future. So that that's. The uh and I will admit that that same paragraph is in every single report, so it's not like it's an original thought that comes up each time, but. That is just kind of the, from the conservative nature of the pension actuarial practice. But uh no one's pointed out that in a while, so I should appreciate you bringing that. Does that adequately? Thank you.
Other members of the commission who haven't asked a question yet? Any other question? Thank you, Casey.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the presentation by Municipal Employees Retirement System of Michigan. MERS Pension by Representatives Tony. Red Genovich, I believe I got it, um of MERS related to the twenty twenty four annual actuarial valuation report.
And Tony is with us online today.
Okay.
Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Um you did well with my name, thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
Very good, glad to be here. Um am I gonna be able to share my screen or are you, do you have the annual evaluation up? Am I gonna drive or is someone else gonna drive?
I do have the report up so I can follow along with your um great summary you had here.
Well, well, thank you. So so with that, um thank you so much for inviting me to be with uh uh meet with the co- uh commissioners today. To review the annual actuarial valuation for the uh. Participation in the defined benefit plan that is administered by the Municipal Employees Retirement Systems of Michigan. Um as you just heard from Casey, that that plan uh that covers your public safety employees. This plan covers your other employees. And um I I know that uh um. We're we are keyed up on the uh page six of the the executive summary. Um just so that you know, that letter that the the executive summary, i- it has an opening letter from Gabriel Roder Smith. And Gabriel Roder Smith is the consulting actuary for MERS, and MERS has over. Just under eight hundred uh defined benefit plans across the state that um we administer. And collectively, we're a multi-employer plan, and Gabriel Roder Smith is our actuary. As well as it is your actuary for the uh three to forty five plan. So there's a lot of similarities in how pensions, you know, require contributions, liabilities. Um annual require um uh how we smooth our assets. There's a lot of those similarities. And if you're interested in how we work with Gabriel Roder Smith. Earlier in the um uh the first few pages of the uh. The annual report, you can see um that letter from Gabriel Roder Smith and. How how our relationship with them is so that we can administer that that plan for the city. So one of the most important things that most uh boards look at is they wanna know what the funded level of. The the pension system is. It was mentioned by your auditor, and the the city's uh pension system is seventy percent funded. One of the things that um Casey mentioned about your public safety plan is that it's an open plan. Well, now, all of your defined benefit divisions, because there's multiple divisions at the city. In the defined benefit plan, they are now closed to new hires. And new hires are no longer able to um enter into that pension system. You have provided for them. A defined contribution or a participant-directed account um. Uh for them to uh new for those new hires to participate in. So all of those previous to, I think, the last division. Um closed uh at the end of um twenty twenty four. So uh all new hires, so all divisions, and not all the divisions had the same closing date. They had different closing dates, but. Uh there absolutely will be no new hires going into the defined benefit plan. As of now, since all those divisions are closed. So we have a closed defined benefit plan, but we're still gonna have to fund that plan. Because all of those employees that were hired prior to the closing dates of those divisions. Were offered and per and are being provided a defined benefit plan. And so we we have to continue to fund those plan, those divisions and those employees. And we're also gonna have to make sure that retirees and beneficiaries of those divisions will be able to receive their pensions as well. So on um page six, it does show that we're seventy percent funded, we are a closed plan, and um. So that is uh higher than the minimum requirement uh without uh by. The state in Public Act two O two, uh which is sixty percent. On page eight, we'll go down to page eight. It this gives an example of reaching a hundred percent funded in ten years by contributing more, something that the. The the city has contributed more in the past, and we'll show you that on table five. Um but if you wanted to get to a hundred percent funded quicker. Then you will by just paying your minimum ADC or annual uh determined contribution. Uh instead of paying that one hundred seventy eight, one ninety six, uh excuse me, you could pay one seventy eight, one ninety six instead of that one forty six. Four twelve a month, and that'd help you reach um a hundred percent sooner than the current amateurization period. Also on page eight, it shows that our um actuarial uh or. Our long-term investment rate of return is six point uh nine three percent. Uh as you heard Casey spoke, that the midpoint is around seven. The state was lower. Previous year at six point nine, the state's at seven percent. Now, we are still at six point nine three. Um one of the things that we've done is we use a dedicated gains policy. We talked a little bit about this. And what uh and what that um is done, if you would like to to learn more about that. Um we do have a resource page that I'll refer to, uh it's referred to at the the end of this page. It talks more about how we are able to keep. Um a long-term rate of return um in that reasonable assumption range. Which is like that sweet spot around seven, that's why we're at six point nine three. Um on pages nine and ten, we're gonna go to page nine first. Um you saw in Casey's um. Presentation where he talked about the the peaks and the valleys and that they sort of smoothed out those required um. Uh uh well, they sort of smoothed out those returns over the years. He showed you where there is that loss in twenty twenty two. MERS had a loss in twenty twenty two as well. Um and uh because of that loss in twenty twenty two, our smooth rate of return is at three point seven nine percent. However, the actual market returns for twenty twenty four were at seven point two eight percent. Going to page twelve, please. Page twelve shows a six-year projection of the funding level and required contributions to fund the defined benefit plan. Please note that this table does not include the over two million dollars in assets and the unassociated surplus funds division. The um the surplus funds division is created to um allow the uh. The city to put in additional assets to take advantage of investment market gains without reducing. The otherwise actuarially determined contribution. And so when you look at this table, it says that the city is only sixty five percent funded. And and that's um how we are calculating those um determined uh uh annual determined contributions. And so so that so uh if we would add those back in, and we do on table six, you'll see that um. The city is seventy percent funded. Um what we also do in this table is for those that. Like to be more conservative than a six point nine three. Um assumed rate of return, you could see what your contributions would be if you wanted to fund it. If you only expected us to make five point nine three or four point nine three percent. And that's that that's what those other tables do, uh uh that's what those other um graphs are doing, six-year projections are doing. Below the top projection. Table thirteen, please. Or I mean, page thirteen. Uh this graph, uh it there's two graphs on this page. The first one is your funded position. As you can see, the. Dotted blue line, that's including that over two million dollars in assets in the surplus funds division. And what it's doing is it's uh it's gonna show you when you're gonna cross that one hundred percent level, if all the assumptions are met between now. And uh uh then, and I think that is year twenty twenty through uh um. Three or twenty, excuse me, twenty twenty thirty nine. Um and uh when you uh, it's just a couple of years or a year and a year or so sooner than if um. You didn't have the surplus funds division uh in there. That dark green line, the the that is really that sixty percent funded level, that's really that line that. Public Act two O two brings uh uh attention to, and you're above that, and the solid blue line is. You know, where you're gonna get there if you didn't have the surplus funds and you had to use them to make your minimum required contributions, because you could. Um you're gonna get there uh by, you know, twenty forty. And that bottom graph, it's actually showing you. The flow of required contributions between now and once you get to uh year uh twenty forty. Right now, it's somewhere around that, as I said earlier, that um. I didn't say it, I didn't add it up. It's about a hundred and or one point seven, one point eight million dollars. It's gonna get as high as about. Two point four million, and then you see it drop off, and it's gonna drop off nearly to zero. And it eventually will drop off to zero once there's no one left in your defined benefit plan. Um page fourteen, table one, please. When we look at this table, what this is showing you is you, the five divisions that we have. They're telling you what the normal cost of that plan would be over there in that second column called total normal cost. If you uh didn't have employee contributions, the uh the the employer normal cost would be the same. Um but because you're asking your employees to help reduce the cost to the employer. Those costs are 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 less by four or five percent. The reason you don't see anything in the column that says employer normal cost as a percentage, because all of your plans are closed. And once we go to a closed plan, we go to a flat dollar amount. And um these dollar amounts are what are needed to be uh collected on a monthly basis. Um by division. Then the next one is that payment of the unfunded accrued liability. Since we're only seventy percent funded, we're thirty percent uh uh underfunded. And so there are a a a payment there that's required to be made, and you can see that. That payment there on a monthly basis is oh nearly almost four times as much as what your uh normal cost is. And that's helping uh and that's so that's moving us closer to that hundred percent funded. And the uh as we, because of our amateurization policy. We are um hoping to be one hundred percent funded if all the assumptions are met within fifteen years. And then you'll see this unfunded accrue liability column. Will then end up dropping off, and if we are a hundred percent funded, you'd only be paying the normal cost. On the remaining employees that are in those closed defined benefit divisions. Let's uh go to page seventeen, table three. I really think that this is an interesting table. It really tells you how many actives as of uh twenty twenty four were still in each of your divisions. It also shows you the vested former members, those that have earned the benefit but yet aren't old enough to collect the benefit, and they're no longer working at the at the city. And then you have the retirees and beneficiaries who um are collecting that benefit from the prior years of service. And when you look down at the bottom in bold, you see that there are seventy active employees, thirty employees that have earned a benefit yet aren't old enough to draw, and there's a hundred and seventeen retirees and beneficiaries. There's also eighteen employees that had paid member contributions but yet aren't vested nor um so they're not vested former members or non vested former members. And unless they are able to find a way to um vest by being rehired at the city or using Act eighty eight or 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 emerged emerged time, most likely they won't be able to get vested, and therefore they're eligible to get a return of their member contributions. So in the city's um retirement plan with MERS, there's two hundred and thirty five participants. Um page nineteen, table five, please. You know, you heard Casey talk about, and there's one question from a commissioner about, well, would it be prudent to pay more than the minimum required contribution? And MERS does talk about that in our executive summary that we encourage employers to do so. And um if you look at table five, this is a historical table that goes back to twenty fourteen. And it shows you what the required contributions are um in the second column. It shows you what were the additional contributions. And you can see in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four, the city did put additional dollars into the system. And when you look at that, that's where you can find, and I talked about that uh surplus funds division. That's where a lot of those dollars were were put into that surplus funds division. And I'll talk about that a little bit more on the on the next page. But as we continue on with table five, you see your employee contributions there, those four and five percent of payroll that have that required for them to offset and lower the employer cost. Those dollars are being uh uh um accounted for there. Investment income, as it was previously talked about by Casey, that's very important as the engine that drives um uh the benefits to the uh retirees and beneficiaries. Uh without investment gain, your cost would be much higher. And we know that uh in our MERS system, more than fifty percent of the benefits received by retirees comes from investment gains over the years. As you can see in this comparative table, that your benefit payments uh from two thousand fourteen, they're around one point five million. And then in twenty twenty four, they're at two point seven million. And um you could, you know, this this is a part of the fact that you're a mature plan and that you have of uh more retirees than you do active members. And you we anticipate that this will probably go up. And then eventually you'll start to see it falling off as this plan is closed and eventually you'll have no actives, you'll have only retirees. And then eventually all those retirees will will pass on and the beneficiaries will pass on. And then the defined benefit plan will have been um uh gone through its life. And if there are any assets left over at that time, they'll be returned back to uh the city. So as you look at this employee contribution refunds, those were are what I talked about with those eighteen employees. You could see that they could get their member contributions back. Net transfers, there could have been some transfers of of individuals um um or dollars between divisions. Then you can see your valuation asset balance is twenty nine uh point four million. Uh next page would be uh uh page twenty. The this is the basically the the table that shows the liabilities and assets of your divisions and then overall. What they want to point out, if you look at just on that sixth line, just above where it says total, you see S one surplus unassociated division. This is the division that's holding those extra dollars, those additional dollars that were put in. There is no liability associated with them, so there is no percent funded. They just go into the the asset column, therefore um elevating the city's funding level from sixty five percent to seventy percent. As you can see, your you you have uh your different divisions are at uh seventy percent and ninety three and one division's at fifty five percent and one's at overfunded a hundred and fifteen. And then the other ones are around eighty four percent funded for an overall uh funded level when you throw in the um surplus funds at seventy percent. The rest of this report has a lot of more detailed data on the divisions, the the five different divisions. Uh it'll go through uh employee counts and assets and liabilities. Um you can look at that if you have questions and want me to go over that. I could I I could I could always do that. Uh it has data that is used uh by your auditors for for Gatsby uh reasons. It also has um data at the back end for completing um requirements of Public Act two oh two and Form fifty five seventy two, I think it is. And then um we also have a a sheet of historical information about when plan provision changes were made. And then um we also, the uh one of the other components, two other components are explains our amortization policy um on the divisional level. And then it also talks about some of the risks that uh Casey mentioned. We have to look at those risks, so you could look at those risk factors and see if there are any things that stand out. But as I reviewed it, I didn't see anything that was worth um or needed to be highlighted in today's presentation. With uh that, I'd just like to uh before I um if you have any questions for me, that there is on the MERS of Mish website, I put in there a um a uh a resource page that can answer lots of our questions that come up about understanding how defined benefit plans are funded. Any question?
Any questions from the commission? Okay. Thank you very much, Tony.
Thank you. And um have a good rest of your meeting.
Yeah, thank you. That brings us to item number five on our agenda. Presentation by Watkins Ross's Christian Veenstra, uh real related to the twenty twenty four annual actuarial valuation for the cities and the police's other post employment benefits, OPEB funds. Thank you, Christian.
Thank you very much. Three actuaries in a row. You guys must have insomnia or something. I like yeah, wow. Uh so thank you for having me here. I was told I would have fifteen minutes. Uh others didn't either didn't get the memo or uh you just said by the time you get to me, you're done. Um so uh I will really try to stick to that. If you humor me, um I think five minutes of an illustration will serve us well for the remaining ten minutes. This is a retiree healthcare plan, meaning we are doing some accounting for, and you are doing some funding for future retiree healthcare benefits. And uh and it's kind of, there's a lot of different things that are different than from a pension. And one of them is that you do not uh earn those benefits per se while you are active. Like with a pension plan, you earn X percent of your pay for each year of service that will be paid when you retire. But for retiree healthcare plan, it's just a promise that when you retire, you'll get some healthcare coverage. For the police, anybody hired before two thousand ten will get their premiums, their healthcare premiums paid for them when they retire. For the spouses of the police, for police hired after twenty ten, and for your city general employees, um the only benefit they get is the opportunity to participate in your active plan. And that is a benefit because um the the private market isn't always so favorable to individuals. But if you can enter in via a group plan, you can get a more favorable rate. So um so that's the that's the benefit, if you will, to um to your uh to your employees. Now, getting to my illustration, when I was driving up here, I saw a truck alongside the road for sale. And um I don't remember the price they had on it, but just so I can do the math in my head, let's say it was twenty four thousand dollars. And you were to approach that person and say, I really want to buy your truck for twenty twenty four thousand dollars. But um I can't do it right now. How about in two years? Would you be willing to hang on for uh hang on to it for two years for me and then I'll and then I'll buy it from you? And they say, okay, sure, fine. Now, you've got to do one of two things. One, you've got to put some money aside for the next two years. Or if you don't, at the very least, you have to expense it and know you've got this growing liability that you're eventually going to have to come up with twenty four thousand dollars in two years. And so you could take that twenty four thousand, and this is where, easy math for me, divided by the twenty four months between now and then and say, I'm going to set aside a thousand dollars every month for the next twenty four months until that truck is available. I'm going to pre-fund for that truck. That thousand dollars is, as you heard from the prior actuaries with respect to the pension plan, that thousand dollars is the normal cost. In OPEB Gatsby accounting, they call it a service cost, but it's the same thing. That's that thousand bucks. Now, it is just a measurement of what you should be doing. So if you expense a thousand dollars every month, after one year, you should have twelve thousand dollars to match that liability of twelve thousand dollars. That twelve thousand dollar liability is where you should be at if you're pre-funding, if you're saving for this truck. Uh and to the extent that you're not there, you hear seventy percent funded, you hear eighty percent funded. To the extent you're you have more money than that, you're overfunded. You might be a hundred and five percent funded, a hundred and ten, but the liability is where you should be at. The normal cost of service cost is what you should be recognizing or funding every month. Now, in our plan, in your retiree healthcare plan, it's all going to be annual, not monthly, but you get the illustration. There's one more thing, and that's with respect to these people who get to participate in your plan. They have what's called an implicit liability that we have to calculate and show to you in a report. And what that uh derives from is their real costs are higher pre sixty five than the premiums that you're paying on their behalf or that you're charging them. You say, we're charging the whole premium. We don't have any liability for them. You do. It's because most of the time, the true cost for that pre sixty five retiree is higher than that premium. Say, well, wait a minute, shouldn't the insurance company be paying uh charging us more then? It's coming from the actives because your active costs are probably lower than the premiums you're being charged by your insurance company. That that difference on the retiree healthcare side has to be accounted for. And so we do two reports for you. One, we do one for the explicit cost for your police that were hired before two thousand ten. The premium you're gonna pay for them, and that's your that's what you're pre-funding for. And then we also do one for the implicit cost, that difference between the true underlying retiree healthcare cost for your retirees and the premium you're paying on their behalf. So thank you for um letting me go through that. So the agenda is to look at the terminology. I talked about implicit versus explicit. And then I'm going to show you the act and uh the actuarial reconciliation in the in the two reports for the police officers and for the city's implicit liability. Um here's the implicit versus explicit cost. Your pre sixty five annual premium, your monthly times twelve is eighty three oh four. Whereas the true underlying cost is probably closer to uh anywhere from ten thousand to fourteen thousand, depending on if you're male or female, depending on if you're the participant or the spouse. And so it's that difference that's driving the implicit cost uh in the city calculation. The reconciliation uh for the liability, uh I went through service cost and uh these other uh items. Let's actually look at the numbers themselves. So we put some uh meat on the bones. The liability to where you should be at for the funding of the police plan was three and a half million dollars at the beginning of the year. You had two point six set aside, so you're roughly seventy percent funded. You had an unfunded liability of nine hundred thousand dollars. The service cost, the additional liability, the additional amount you should be setting aside, recognizing during the year was seventeen thousand dollars um for your uh part for your active participants that in this plan that comes down to about a thousand dollars uh a year. If you're trying to think about the total cost of their uh their active package. And interest on that liability is recognizing that if you're trying to measure where you should be at from a funding standpoint, you expect your assets to earn money during the year. So you expect your liability to adjust by that uh amount as well during the year. So that's that hundred ninety nine, just under two hundred thousand dollars that you expect the liability to grow with interest in the same way you'd expect your assets to return uh to grow by investment return. Experience gains losses, that's that arrives when we are projecting what we think the costs will be at retirement. If costs come in a little bit less or a little bit higher, you have an actuarial gain, a reduction in the liability that wasn't expected. Or if they come in higher than expected, you could have an actuarial loss. Similar to the guy with the truck coming back and telling you, hey, you know what? I'm thinking I'm going to charge you twenty five thousand instead of twenty four. Now you've got actuarial loss because you have to come up with more. Um and it can go the other way as well. Change in actuarial assumptions, uh that is from the expected um oh, I don't know off the top of my head. Sorry, I got my report. I can look it up. But if you change the actuarial assumptions, lower or increase the expected return on assets, that will change the liability. Uh I think that's a mortality adjustment uh that that drove that forty six thousand dollars. And then benefit payments, that's liability settled for the year, ninety three thousand dollars. So your total change in your police liability where you should be at the end of the year is three point six million dollars. Now, if your assets walk hand in hand with your liabilities, then you would expect return on assets to offset the interest on the liability. Well, your net investment income was three hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars more than the interest on that liability. So that more than covered it. And your contributions to the fund should cover your service cost, and they more than covered the service cost. You had that plus an amount to start paying off that unfunded liability. So you had a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars uh come in from a contribution. And you paid about twenty five thousand dollars out of general operating funds for your retirees instead of taking it out of assets. That's uh that that's like a contribution to the fund. So uh that was a twenty five thousand dollar credit. Then uh employee contributions for fourteen thousand uh and your net investment income, like I said, three hundred and twenty eight, benefit payments ninety three reduces the fund, administrative expenses twenty two reduced the fund. But your fund had a net increase of four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, leaving you with three million at the end. And now uh much better funded um uh just over eighty percent at the end of the year. That's the reconciliation of the funded plan. We give you an actuarially determined contribution so that you can uh pre-fund this by the time everybody's retired. Because again, it's a closed group. We have a short amortization period with the intent of having this funded by the time everybody retires. Twenty twenty four, we used eight. In twenty twenty five, we used six years. And the service cost, the additional liability earned by the actives of seventeen thousand in twenty four, sixteen thousand in twenty five. The amortization, the unfunded liability, because your funded position improved so well from the beginning to the end of the year, went down from one thirty five to one oh five. So the actuarially determined contribution to fund this plan by the time everybody retires is a hundred and sixty one thousand in twenty twenty four, which you contributed, and in twenty twenty five, it's one twenty eight. I I will, right before I I talk about the uh the unfunded liability, the implicit liability for everybody else, I do want to mention the risk because it was asked, the two biggest risks uh in in a retiree healthcare plan are return on investments as in the pension plan. But the other one is healthcare costs in excess of what is anticipated. And that's a real big risk with retiree healthcare plan. In a pension plan, however, your pensions, once they're earned, are locked in. In a retiree healthcare plan, you have the flexibility of changing the provisions of the plan to offset that impact if necessary. You can increase the retiree contributions to offset it. In fact, there are non vested benefits. There's collective bargaining that you have to consider. But it is possible, as you have found, close the plan and even to the extent, take it away altogether. And there are other options too that we could discuss sometime if it ever came to that, uh setting up a defined contribution type of arrangement for your retiree healthcare and eliminating the OPEB liability altogether. Um this page uh shows you the uh expected return calculation, uh five point six eight. That comes from the investment blend that you have and the expected return by uh by asset allocation and the mortality table that we used as well. Then, the city's implicit subsidy. I'm really running up against it, but I can get it in. Uh three point four million dollars of liability that's being driven strictly by the fact that the true costs for the uh retirees are greater than the premiums that the insurance company is charging you. And so that shows up on your books. There's no real value in pre-funding that because uh the active premiums are covering that cost. But you're just putting it in the right bucket for your financial statements. That service cost for that group is a hundred and two thousand dollars. I believe that came out about a thousand bucks a person as well. Interest, a hundred and thirty seven thousand. Change in actuarial assumptions here. This was an increase in the discount rate. Because it's an implicit subsidy, it's not tied to assets. It comes from the prevailing bond rate. And the bond rate environment, uh those rates went up. Liability came down five hundred and fifty nine thousand dollars. And so uh at the end of the year, it went from above three million to below three million. And your active premiums that you paid on behalf of your active participants settled a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of this liability. Um cost that theoretically was covering those underlying costs for the retirees higher than the uh ex uh higher than the premiums being charged by your um insurance company. And then the assumptions for that, and that's me. Questions?
That was fifteen minutes.
Was it? Thank you.
That um questions from the commission. See, thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate it.
You bet. Thanks for having me.
Alrighty, that brings us to the end of proclamations and presentations um and into additions and deletions to the agenda. Are there any items that the commission would like to add or remove from the agenda at this time? Is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Commissioner E- or Vice Mayor Ekke, um seconded by um Commissioner Al Sager. Um all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please say nay. Motion passes. Okay, we will move into now on public input on agenda items. If you are a member of the public and would like to give comments on any item in our agenda, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes to speak. I would ask that you state the item on which you're speaking, your name and address. Um keep in mind that we do have a public hearing, item number fifteen. So if you are here to speak on that, please consider speaking during the public hearing. Is there anyone on Zoom? Anyone with raised hands? Um you can speak on Zoom? No? Any emails? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to give public input on agenda items at this time? Not seeing any. No one rushing up to the stand? I'm going to close public input on agenda items, and we will move into receipt of petitions and communications. Manager of dissents, if you would.
A receipt of petitions and communications this evening includes the second quarter investment report, minutes of the planning commission from June, letter from Bruce Kilmer on electric bicycles and scooters on city trails, and letter from Ginny Hade on the proposed Chris gas station.
I would just like to make a comment to members of the public. Um we appreciate communications all the time. Specifically, if you are interested on communicating on the Chris gas station, I believe there would be a hearing for the zoning board of appeals. The commission is not and does not have any direct impact influence on that issue. Moving along to consent items. Manager of dissents, if you would.
Consent items this evening includes approval of the minutes from the regular meeting held July fourteen, twenty twenty five. Consider renewal of the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority Insurance for the period of seven one twenty twenty five through seven one twenty twenty six in the amount of two hundred seventy five thousand, seven hundred ninety nine dollars. Consider approval of M dot contract twenty twenty five dash zero four seven seven and adopt resolution to support the continued operation and maintenance of the automated weather observation and data dissemination system at the Mount Pleasant Regional Airport and authorize the city manager to sign the contract electronically. Consider termination of contract with Keen Heating and Cooling and award the contract for the remaining thirteen jobs to custom heating and plumbing and request a budget amendment on the contract and consider approval of payrolls and warrants.
Thank you. There are any items that uh members of the commission would like to remove from the consent agenda? Not seen any. Are there any questions or discussion that members like to put forward? And not seen any. Um is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
And then we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll sec- I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Bush, seconded by Commissioner Al Sager. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, please indicate by saying nay. Motion passes. All right, that that brings us to item number fifteen, um our first public or first and only public hearing of the evening. Uh manager of dissents, if you would.
Uh following our last work session on this topic, the city commission is asked to hold a public hearing this evening to consider the adoption of an ordinance that amends the city's regulations governing bike and e-bike usage on city trail system. The ordinance would impose a ten mile per hour speed limit on sidewalks, linear trails and shared use pathways. I know we have Director Loria here who had worked on this in particular. I don't know if there's something he wanted to mention as well.
Uh the ordinance would allow um all classes of e-bikes, uh like the city manager said, with a ten mile per hour speed limit. Uh there's updated uh definitions of each of the classes of e-bikes. There are uh requirements of signaling when passing and things like that, uh including updated enforcement and penalties. And then addition to that, while not in the ordinance, uh we plan on and have completed some of the um announcements and educational campaign um on this updated ordinance. And we'll also incorporate signage into the park trails.
Thank you. All right. At this time, I will open up the public hearing. If there are any members of the public who would like to step forward and offer or comments on this topic, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record. Um if there is anyone on Zoom, please indicate that you'd like to speak by raising your, using the raised hand function.
Hello, my name is Kim Martin and I live at one one three North Harris Street. I use the paths that we're talking about in the parks, the J K B, J G K B, uh riverwalk trails almost daily. Um so those are what my remarks are concerning are the trails that connect the city parks. I'm an experienced bicycle rider and I have also ridden an e-bike. Um I really believe these trails are one of the city's greatest assets and they are used very well. I hope that you have been along the trails and can see how they kind of weave and bend along the river, sometimes on both sides of the river, going up to the platform, going around to the meadow. But what that also does is create some limited visibility areas. Around every curve, there's often a surprise, whether it's people with dogs or pushing carriages or, you know, sometimes little tiny kids pushing their scooters. We've got people walking with canes. We have wildlife. We have wildflowers. We have the river itself. There is a lot to divert your attention. So there's also city staff on gators that are moving fairly quickly that take up a large portion of the the drive when they come through. You have lots of bicycles and you have kids and adults of all ages and all abilities on them. So I have concerns regarding putting an e-bike, numerous e-bikes into that area. First, let's talk about your ten mile per hour limit. If the average walking speed is three miles an hour, someone coming ten miles per hour is going to come up fairly quickly. And e-bikes are very quiet. It doesn't give you much chance to react and avoid a problem, and whether that's pulling your child who's on a bicycle back from four feet in front of you or getting your dog pulled back next to you when they're out on their six foot leash across the walkway because they happen to see a junk. So I feel that there are some issues regarding that ten miles per hour. I also would like to point out that the average stopping distance for a bicycle traveling ten miles per hour on dry pavement from your initial reaction to a full stop is forty one feet. Also, consider that you're going to add in the weight and the momentum of an e-bike to that. Also understand that speedometers are not standard equipment on class one and two e-bikes or on most bicycles. So complying with that ten mile per hour requirement is going to be subject to a lot of individual interpretation. When I'm riding a bicycle and I feel like I'm going ten miles per hour, could be very different from when Commissioner Al Sager is riding her bicycle and thinks she's going ten miles per hour. I don't know if the rest of you ride bikes, but I know you do. The enforcement. My understanding is we have two code enforcement officers for the city. They're typically driving in their trucks dealing with infractions. That leaves no monitoring system for these paths, especially during evenings and weekends. There's no way to identify an individual or their e-bike. There's no license plate on there that can be reported. Even if you happen to obtain a video of someone being reckless, there's no way to re- identify them. There's no system to register how fast someone is actually going unless you're going to set up radar guns along the paths. So there's really no chance of stopping or catching anybody who's moving through the park quickly. Your consequences. Well, warning. If someone with authority happens to catch someone, then yeah, they can give them a warning. Repeat offenses. Are you going to establish a database with twelve and thirteen and fourteen year olds with their names and addresses so that if they do happen to get caught and you happen to get caught a second time, you could consider it a repeat offense? A fine. There's no way to prove a civil infraction if you have no way to register how fast somebody is going.
Thank you, Kim. Your time's expired.
Okay, thanks. Can I say one more thing?
Certainly.
Just one. Basically, I feel like you are allowing motorized bikes on trails with no monitoring system, no ability to enforce it and no actual consequences. These are not all going to be responsible adults who are experienced riders who are going to be following this. You are going to have twelve to fifteen year olds who are, don't read your signage, don't really concern themselves with what's around the bend and never think they are going too fast. Thank you.
Thank you. Danny, I'm going to hold you to it this time.
Do I get five minutes?
Just the five, yeah.
Okay, you'll let me know. I I hope not to take that long. Um my name is Dennis Martin. I live at one one three North Harris Street, and Kim and I have been there for forty five years now. When we first came, uh the paved, there were no paved trails. We rode our bikes on the dirt. We rode our bikes on the on the uh woodchips that were there. There was nothing. The city's done a wonderful job with their trails, and I don't want to see them ruined. At this point in time, we travel a lot on the trails. If you can't tell that, um I could probably show you every mark on every sign that's been destroyed by somebody with a paint can. And fortunately, this week, somebody came through and tried to wash them. So it's better, but it's still not there. Um we're uh most concerned because we see infractions all the time. We've seen four wheeled go-karts. We've seen golf carts. We've seen our city's gators. We've seen um motorcycles, the new motorcycles. They're both gasoline and electric. Or you can get them with pedals and without. Um I am most concerned that we are going to see that a lot, especially when you have a special event, uh for instance, in Island Park. We see people driving cars during baseball games. We see people driving golf carts during baseball games. And we see also a lot of electric vehicles driving on the lawns in adjacent places to people who are standing and sitting and watching an activity. Um I I'm I'm real concerned about the mix of of how this happens. Um I think at this point in time, um what Kim said is true about being able to track and follow. Uh these bikes don't require licenses. When I was a kid, growing up with a bicycle, I was required by the city to have a registration on my bicycle. And if I didn't have it, they they'd call my parents. And the possibility was they'd take the bike. We all had licenses. I think it's a great thing for the city to consider. Um the other thing that it does is each bike is registered with a class identification. It tells you which class it is. If that label has been defaced or missing, your bike gets confiscated. All right, so consider that too. Um the other thing I would like to say is you're not the first people to have to consider these kinds of things. I went through this fifty years ago at the Department of Commerce in Chicago, along with OSHA, along with the Department of Transportation and along with the Consumer Product Safety Commission. At that type, at that time, they required that all bicycles had reflectors on the front wheel, reflectors on the back wheel. They had reflectors on the pedals. They had reflectors. Um and at that time, they proposed helmets for everybody. It it, I mean, obviously, some things were approved and some things were not. In in closing, and I'll give you back any time I have remaining, um I I would like to see the city consider more of this than what I see on this piece of paper. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Other members of the public? Is there anyone on Zoom? Any emails? Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing. And I will turn it to the members of the commission. Anyone like to start us off with any discussion or questions for staff? Motion? Commissioner Bershbocker.
Um I'm wondering, where does, it says that this is a um public hearing for motorized vi- bikes and scooters. Where in the ordinance does it say scooter?
It doesn't. That that's a, it's not, it's not for scooters.
Okay, okay. I was confused because I'm just thinking maybe I was spelling scooter wrong or something.
Oh, okay. Other members of the commission? Commissioner Al Sager.
I just have a comment that there's the Riverwalk Trail that comes up to us from the south and we're working on it to the north and eventually we'll have it go through the city. And that's going to be a wider trail. And that would be probably a more apropos place for people that want to get on their bike and exercise and get in a few miles. So I'm talking about adults, most likely. I think a lot of this is kids that need somewhere to ride their bikes, and hopefully, they don't have electric bikes. But anyhow, I do see the issues involved with this.
Vice Mayor?
I share the same concern as Commissioner Al Sager. I've said this before, that I have problems with e-bikes on that trail. I mean, you know, I have come close to being knocked down by, you know, somebody who's not even just regular bike, you know, no bell, no A on your left, on your right, nothing, just zoom. You know, so I am worried about that because now we have to contend with people just riding regular bikes and then, you know, people with e-bikes, and I walk that trail, you know, a resident of, you know. Ms. Martin is absolutely correct. You know, if you work that, you know, that trail has hidden blind spots, right? And quite a few of them. So I understand the concern. I am concerned. I'm just simply reluctant. You know, I said this earlier. I have difficulty, you know, coming to terms with having e-bikes there. And I don't know how to. I understand the need for, you know, providing opportunity to connect with the, you know, the, what is it, you know, the trail to the north that we're trying to extend, you know, but I'm also concerned about safety issues, and right now, that's probably paramount for me than, you know, making the connection.
Going back to Commissioner Pirscher.
According to the ordinance, there are quite a lot of requirements, including lamp equipment on the bike, some type of audible signal given, either a bell or an audible signal such as a rider's voice. There are, it's not something that's going to be changed overnight. It is something that is going to require a lot of public education. We're going to, we do have park rangers that ride bikes throughout the park and check on people. I see them all the time outside of my office window as they're heading back to their space, but the park system, and I agree that it's a great asset, it's also an extreme expense. That does not, we don't charge to use the park. We don't charge outside residents or people who are visiting to use the parks. And it is something that we have so that everyone can enjoy the outdoors. I understand the concerns, but I have also ridden my bike on the trails. I've also run, you know, 5Ks on the trails. I've also have walked my dogs on the trails. I enjoy the parks, but I am maybe a little odd because I'm extremely observant of what's going on around me. I'm always checking my corners, checking my space, looking from one space to another. I don't walk with my phone in my face, right, because that is the best way to trip and fall or to be suddenly surprised by somebody. I am in support of this because it gives us direction. If we handle this correctly and we do the public education well, and we bring back like the events that we used to have where the children would come and we would help secure their bikes. We would make sure that they had good helmets. A lot of times, we, you know, a lot of CMU students register their bikes so that, you know, with CMU, so that they know if something gets lost, they can find their bike. And I think that that is very important. I remember registering my bike as a child. It was, it gave you a sense of I'm doing something right and everyone knows that I own this kind of thing. But I think that we really, truly need to make sure that we push that public education and we are on top of true monitoring the parks while this education is starting. Once you start changing, making changes, as long as you stay on top of it, you know, for a good period of time, it becomes the norm. Change is extremely hard, and I understand that. I work with change all the time. Change is extremely hard. But change, if we don't change and we don't include everyone to be able to, you know, enjoy the parks, then, you know, what do we have the parks for?
Commissioner Bush?
I want to echo a lot of what I was going to say, actually, Commissioner Pirscher just said. I wanted to add some points, too. Sometimes people are using e-bikes for many reasons, but they are sometimes using them for a mode of transportation. And, you know, providing as much opportunity to use those for, you know, transportation, for, you know, for uses to meet their basic needs. I also just did a little quick search online, and 10 miles per hour is a speed that is quite easily attained by even a regular pedal bicycle. The average bicycle's speed seems to range here between ages between about, you know, 15 and almost, pretty much 20 miles an hour, and that's your average speed. So 10 miles per hour is significantly slower and can be reached by a pedal bicycle. I don't think we're going to see a huge influx of electric bikes just because we, and correct me if I'm wrong, but they're already there, right? Yeah, they're already there. And so providing some guidance as to how they can be used safely is really, you know, what needs to happen. We need to have these policies in place so that enforcement can happen, and I know enforcement is hard. Enforcement is always hard. Raise your hand here if you have gone 57 miles an hour in a 55 and not gotten pulled over. Every single one of us in here has probably done that. And so there are, so things are going to slip through the cracks sometimes. And that is why we need to focus on the education and focus on the positive and not on the punishment. And I would love to see these bicycle safety events happen again. I think it was a great public engagement event. I remember a lot of people coming out, families. I think it would be, especially considering this progress that we're having with the trail. It is going to be part of our Mount Pleasant culture, part of our tourism industry. And we should be prepared in all ways possible, and that includes ordinances like this and public education. So I feel like it's necessary to support this because it's going to happen anyway.
Commissioner Zane?
I have heard from a lot of people, but most of them were, what Kim Martin said, kind of consolidated those comments. And for me, this is a safety issue, and when you have motorized vehicles on a path through the park, we're inviting accidents. That will increase as we connect the northern and the southern bike trails, inviting people to use the park path system as a thoroughfare. We should expect, as Ms. Martin pointed out, problems, and for the reasons she spelled out, I will be voting against this. I agree, we should have these bike safety things, but it's probably not going to attract the motorized bike people that we hope to get. For me, parks are for everyone. Everyone should get to use the park. But those who use it shouldn't be forced out by people speeding through the trails. Everyone, including people who own motorcycles and electric bikes and other vehicles. They can park them, get out, and enjoy the trails. Leave the parks for everyone, but not motorized vehicles.
Commissioner Rollins?
I have a question for Director Loria. How many park rangers do we have?
We typically have four for, per season.
Okay.
So at any one, we don't typically staff higher than two. And so there'll be overlap unless there's something major going on in the parks, like when we had the softball tournaments or, you know, something big going on in the parks, Summer Fest, that sort of thing, then it was kind of all hands on deck.
So what hours do they usually arrive?
Well, they would, let me be clear on their role. They would be more the eyes than the enforcers. So they would be in the parks. They saw something. They would call a police officer down. We don't tend to put them into situations where, you know, they're stopping somebody and that sort of thing. You know, so they would always notify, the protocol is to always notify on-duty officers.
Okay, because my concern is that everybody's worried about enforcement. How is this enforcement going to take place?
Well, you know, one of the things, people want enforcement right up until you enforce it.
Okay.
And that's a fact. And I have talked about this before, about when you get a ticket on a bicycle and you're, it goes on your driving record, okay? So I know we're talking about safety. I'm a huge proponent of safety. But if you want to make those trails safe, you can't just address e-bikes. You got to do bicycles. And this is a difficult conversation. We have had two work sessions on this. And if you want to eliminate e-bikes, I don't know. Let's go out in the parking lot. I'll let someone hit me with a bicycle 10 miles per hour, and then I'll put you on an e-bike and let you hit me again and ask me which one hurts more. How do you differentiate is what I'm saying. So to me, it's kind of all with these rules, or it's nothing. Because a pedal bike, it's all up to the rider. That's what we're talking about here. We want to make it about the pedal, or we want to make it about the motor and the bike? What about the rider that is on the bike?
But I think this needs to be tied in with what Commissioner Bush was saying. Most people don't know if you get a ticket on an e-bike that it would also hit your driving record.
Yeah.
So in a way, if we could educate the public of the penalty and how that would affect them, it would be more likely to change their behavior anyway. I don't think people know that a ticket on a bike, when it hits.
And let me be clear, on the path,
Right.
it would not. Just, there's a difference there.
Okay.
I'm talking on the roadway in that regard. On the path, though, you know, if you're not going to obey the roadway rules, you're certainly not going to abide by the pathway rules. And then you do have the idea of juveniles and stuff, and
Right.
yeah, are we going to write a juvenile a ticket? Well, we could, but are we more likely to call their parent and take action that way? That's what we would do. But I can assure you, you guys will hear about it when we do it.
Yeah.
Because my kid was out riding his bike 20 miles an hour, and he was stopped by police. And guess what? I had to leave work, and then we'll have a different conversation. So I understand, I understand the concerns in the safety thing, but I just don't know how you demonize e-bikes and exclude bicycles. Let's talk about riders because it takes both, or it takes that common thing between both modes of transportation.
If I may, a couple of questions for you on this, or actually only the one I can remember off the top of my head. This is largely in line with what Union Township also has, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Along with that also, can you remind us what exists currently in this regard as far as governing, an ordinance governing bikes on trails?
Yes, so there's nothing. There's absolutely nothing. We had signs erected in the entrance of, to the entrance of some of the trails with no enforcement mechanism to enforce it. So just because a sign's posted, you know, if you're on the road, you have to have a traffic control order to back up that speed limit sign, if that makes sense. Same thing with the trails. You don't need a traffic control order, but if it says no motorized trails, but there's no ordinance prohibiting it, you really have nothing.
Yeah. Yeah, so the thoughts I've had on this kind of stem from, again, moving from a space where there is no ordinance governing. So as we're seeing issues out there, as we're seeing reports of golf carts or four-wheelers on the trail, or just like, again, reckless driving of bikes, there's not as much governing. This moves us in the direction of like putting better governance over it, and again, allows us to, well, since we're putting in place a penalty, we can educate around an existing penalty, something that's actually on the books, that we can, again, build an education program around. We can build marketing around that fact. And, I mean, policy, it's like a really big freight ship. It takes a lot to churn it. It takes a lot to change direction. So if we hear that there's problems right now, I believe that there's problems out on the trails of like reckless driving, improper use, but to change that when we have, I mean, residents of Mount Pleasant, there's 20,000 of us. Then we have people coming in from out of state, or not out of state, out of town, wherever they're coming from. We have a lot of people to educate on that. And again, unless we have someone sitting there, like enforcing things, there's no difference between, as Director Loria has pointed out, there's no difference between an e-bike and a regular bike. We could just ban all bikes, ban any kind, anything with wheels, and it's, as Commissioner Pirscher pointed out, we want to make these things as accessible as possible because they are a valuable and vital resource for the community. My thoughts on this, I would be in favor, I would be supportive of it because I think it moves us in the right direction, not because it necessarily addresses each and every concern that we have out there, but I think it moves us in the right direction, but also acknowledging that there are concerns and there's concerns expressed by the commission. Again, as Director Loria has pointed out, our body, we've had two work sessions, and this is the second public hearing. If there is interest in doing something different, we might try a different approach. Maybe we recommend this to the Parks and Recreation Commission to get further inputs. That would be the direction I'd suggest as opposed to just voting down, maybe tabling for more information. If that was the direction the commission wanted to move in, if there was, if people aren't comfortable with approving this evening. That's my thought. That, that's my thoughts there. Um, but again, I would be comfortable supporting this here. Um, Vice Mayor Eke.
If I recall, um, at the last session when we, when we last saw this, part of the reason why we returned it to Director Loria was because, um, I do believe that it was Director Biscorna who indicated that Union Township had this, a similar ordinance. And we were trying to work in coherence or in, to harmonize with Union Township, anticipating the extension of this north-south, you know, bike trail. I, that's my understanding. Okay? I don't think that, I don't believe that, for me, the resistance has nothing to do with change. I'm not afraid of change. I mean, look at me, I'm here. I grew up in an, in an entirely different country. I am here. I am not afraid of change. It's not that. The issue that I have contended with over and over has to do with safety. One, because my body has practically been accosted by the bike. And I say that again and again, because that comes from personal space. We talked about, you know, imposing some kind of mileage at a certain point and we said that wouldn't work. Well, if we're saying 10 miles, if a regular bike can get up to 10 miles without, you know, uh, uh, you know, checking it and an e-bike can probably exceed that. The issue again is enforcing it. I have said I will support this because of the larger purpose, but I'm doing it reluctantly. Yes, I want us to expand, to grow, but I am also saying here is caution, right? Um, the issue of education came up because we were asking these questions. You know, if you recall, I did ask Director Loria if there were going to be signs placed at certain places on the trail to indicate to people that we're imposing certain mileage or, and all of those things, will, will there be signage? If you say to me that we're going to do that, I've read this again, it's the same document that we saw a while ago with a few additions. I will support it reluctantly and with caution. I just, I'm just simply saying this upfront because of the larger purpose, which is to expand the use of the trail. So, you know, the problem is, again, the education. And I hope that with just two park rangers, we are going to be able to do all this education and all the work that is needed to make sure that this works effectively and that people are safe and people understand the implications of using this particular trail.
Commissioner Rollins, did you still have?
No.
Other members of the commission? Okay. We've had a bit of discussion on this. Does anyone feel comfortable making a motion on the topic?
I'm not.
Giving a moment. So it looks like Commissioner Bush here is pulling up some language.
I move that we, um, accept the proposed changes and adopt, um, Chapter 72 of the city's code of ordinance entitled bicycles and electric bicycles regarding usage of motorized bikes and scooters on city-owned char, trails.
Friend, can we strike scooters?
I didn't say scooters.
Yes, you did.
Yes, you did. Yeah.
You did.
Yeah, yeah.
Reading it and I accidentally said scooters?
Yeah. It says scooters.
You're right. Sorry. Not at all. I, I was paying attention to it up there.
Yeah. So the motion hasn't been seconded yet.
Okay. So, yeah, I, uh, I move that we, um, consider proposed changes and, uh, adopt Chapter 72 of the city code of ordinance entitled bicycles and electric bicycles regarding the usage of motorized bikes on city-owned trails. Thank you. I was looking for it too.
There was a motion. Is there a, by Commissioner Bush? Is there a second?
I will second that.
There's a second. Commissioner Pirschbacher seconds. Um, all those in favor of the motion, the mo.
This is an ordinance. Is that, is that a?
That's an excellent point there. This, this, um, I think, yeah, I believe out of safety, we'll just do a roll call vote to being a, um, change to an ordinance. Thank you, Commissioner Zhang and Commissioner Rollins. Um, let's see. So those in favor of the motion, um, will be voting in favor of adopting the proposed ordinance. Um, those against are obviously against adopting the proposed ordinance. And when called, please indicate, um, by saying aye if you are in support and nay if you are in opposition. Uh, Commissioner Schmelzer, if you would take the role.
Clerk, clerk, thank you. We have a new clerk.
Commissioner Zhang.
No.
Commissioner Rollins.
Do I have to?
Yes.
Commissioner Al Sager.
Yes.
Commissioner Bush.
Yes.
Commissioner Pershawbacher.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eke.
Reluctantly, yes.
Mayor Ringard.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Okay. That brings us on to item number 16, the start of, um, start of new business. Um, consider budget amendment for sustainability coordinator position. Manager de sense, if you would.
So the city commission adopted a climate change preparedness plan in late 2024. The plan aims to curb climate change. There are a number of goals and objectives to be implemented by the city. Direction from the city commission at that time was to engage with a consultant to provide further information on return investment for actions taken within the plan. And I detailed to the city commission my memo and my follow-up emails about, uh, how that process went. Suffice to say, the relationship with the consultant did not work out. So, that was staff and we revisited the strategy for implementation of the plan and reviewed other tasks for consideration that currently do not have a specific staff member working on implementation. That list had been added to the task list associated with the climate change preparedness plan goals and objectives to create a job description, which is provided in your city commission packet. Staff is recommending that the city commission authorize a budget amendment of $42,000 for the remainder of 2025 to provide compensation for a new position titled sustainability coordinator. This position will be a temporary two-year appointment with an optional third year. The position benefits the city by providing direct staffing support for the climate resilience and preparedness goals. Staff believes that a dedicated person can both investigate the return on investment of these goals while working on direct implementation of them. The city can also benefit by having a staff member lead efforts on our designation of the Chippewa River as an official water trail. This designation can open up funding and marketing opportunities for river-based activities and infrastructure. I have a clarification.
Certainly.
Uh, and that, remember that you're just reading, it says 42,000 for the remainder of 2025. What's the annual cost? Uh, rounding it off to about a hundred thousand dollars. So we're talking about, um, benefits and salary reaching about a hundred thousand.
Vice Mayor Eke.
I, um, talked to manager de sense briefly about this position. I like this position, one, because we have, we made a concerted effort to develop this climate preparedness plan over a period of time. And, you know, if, if we're to sustain this and if we're to achieve, uh, achieve our goal, we actually do need to place somebody in charge of it, right? You know, um, it doesn't make sense having a climate, uh, you know, um, readiness, goal or plan that is not supported, not funded. But I also like the expansion of this because the, the, um, you know, the work with the river has implications for climate also. But I'm also hoping that, you know, this particular position would do other things. Um, including, um, working with, um, Director Biscorna on, you know, other aspects of the park. Um, and also serving in a particular, in, you know, as a liaison with, you know, groups here in Mount Pleasant that are interested in, uh, climate change, and there are quite a few of them. So I think if, if we are going to be serious about what we said we're going to do, then, you know, it, it's important for us to fund this. Yeah. So that's, I will support it.
Yeah, um, I would jump in on the conversation, um, and just say that I think, um, the climate, growing climate crisis has been a chief issue of concern for myself. Um, it was one of the motivating reasons for me getting involved in, uh, public service, running for office. Um, but how can we break down big issues that affect us globally to tackling them locally? Um, and again, it's not just, it's not just solving the climate crisis. Um, it's about, um, mitigating the impacts that will affect us here locally and doing our part. Um, so again, I think, I'm, I think the fact that, um, the consultants ultimately fell through, I think, I, I think there's a silver lining in there because I think having, building that in-house infrastructure for ourselves. Um, I, I, I do like that direction. So I'm supportive of this coordinator position. Um, I'd be excited to support this as well. Um, other members of the commission, Commissioner Bush?
Is this gonna, is this position going to, um, be responsible for any, uh, what, what type of community engagement, education? How is that incorporated into the position?
Yeah, absolutely. The way that I envision it is this, it really is going to be all things sustainability, climate change related for the, uh, for the city. So communication regarding those things, absolutely, that would be within this person's wheelhouse.
Commissioner Pirschbacher.
Um, I would support this, um, this new position. Uh, for one reason is that we, we understand that climate is changing. We have a, you know, we're just talking about our parks. We have a waterway that goes through our parks. And we have talked before about how we need to be aware of what, um, what happens in our air quality. We've had air, bad air quality for quite a while because of the fires in Canada. Um, we have, you know, my concern is the fact that the, the warmer it gets, the wetter it gets, the larger, um, populations of mosquitoes and other bugs like deer flies and things like that can make it impossible or nearly impossible to enjoy the system, the park system that we have. So staying on top of this, I do like the fact that there is a farmer's market and community sustainability program um, involved in this, which means that person would not only create that, but staff it and make sure that, um, it is used. I like that. They're talking about waste reduction and composting, um, sustainable transportation, which we've already just discussed at the, in the last, um, piece that we talked about. It is, um, it's very important that we stay ahead of what is happening to our, our world. And our world is not, is not always the entire world. Sometimes it is just our community. And I want to make sure that we stay on top of this and we do not allow our park system, our river, our quality of life to go down. I think we need to definitely be part of it.
Other members of the commission, Commissioner Al Sager.
Um, I'll, I'll be supporting this, but as I read it, it sounds like quite a hodgepodge of responsibilities. It's going to have to be a very nimble person to, to take this job.
Yeah. Yeah. I'll say to that note, I think the, the main thing that we're looking for is an individual with, um, some experience in, let's say, environmental science, who's maybe worked on these kinds of things before. Um, so I think that's kind of the, uh, that's the commonality between a lot of these different things is at least that background environmental science.
Commissioner Zhang.
I will not be supporting this, although I am strongly in favor of working on climate change. Uh, we've been talking about this for a long time, as we know, nothing happened. So now we're going to spend a hundred thousand dollars a year for this. Uh, as pointed out, to envision all things climate change. This is, to Commissioner Al Sager's point, this is like a hodgepodge, just like, let's, let's just put this so we can say we're working on the climate. That's good. I think we should work on the climate. I'm not sure we've defined it well enough to say, here's the kind of thing we want to accomplish. Here's the, the kind of areas that we can affect our contribution to the climate. Because this is what it is. We, we won't change the, the, the world climate, uh, totally. But there are things that we can do. But somehow it needs to be, I, defined a little better to spend that kind of money.
So Commissioner Bush and then Vice Mayor Eke.
Okay. I'm seeing a lot of things on this job description that were previously in, under the head of Parks and Recreation, if I'm not correct, right? Um, the water trail designation, riverbank erosion, park asset management support. And the park system had been operating with a reduced staffing for a couple of years now. Um, and I, I, I'm commis, our Director Biscorna on more than one occasion has addressed an issue of having too much on the plate. I don't want to put words into your mouth, but, um, and I, I think that this is a very responsible redirection of some of the programs that used to be handled by the Parks and Recreation Department, moving them under a logical transition to a head of considering, um, you know, climate issues. But these are also things that the city has to do. Right now, the Parks and Recreation Department is doing riverbank erosion and restoration. The water trail designation, when we lost our, um, Parks Director, that got dropped. And that's a possible major source of recreation and tourism for our community. And I have absolutely no bias in this whatsoever, but, but, but no, but it, but it is. And then park, I mean, th- these are, and the farmer's market as well. I mean, our farmer's market, I mean, I don't have to, well, this is what I was going to talk about in Commissioner comment anyway, but, um, but yeah, thi- this all makes sense to me. And I, and I know it sounds like a lot of money. But this is stuff that we were doing before that kind of got squeezed and squeezed and squeezed. And we lost one of our, we, we lost a Parks Director employee. And I'm sure that was a hundred thousand dollar position a couple of years ago. And now we're just kind of moving it under a new heading. It was money that we were spending already and now we're, and, and you can't ask people to do too much. And, and I, I, I think that we definitely need some, you know, fresh eyes on, on these issues. Um, cause otherwise they're just not going to get done.
Vice Mayor Eke.
I want to concur with, um, Commissioner Bush. The city manager is asking us for 42,000 right now. Everything, everything that's indicated here, the water trail designation, it has implications for climate. I mean, I don't know how we're defining climate change. Okay? Riverbank erosion and restoration, well, erosion, climate. Our park systems, well, if we don't handle that, climate change has implications for all of those two. So farmer's market, are we concerned about food and talking to, yes, sustainability? It says, the title says to me, it doesn't say climate change coordinator. It says sustainability coordinator. So sustainability in various ways, right? And so if we are talking, I come from a development perspective, right? If we're talking sustainability, it means maintaining this beyond just a few months. So if this person, it's a two-year contract, if we eventually like this person and the person likes us, perhaps the person would stay and we wouldn't have to go looking for another person in the future or trying to contract with an organization or an entity who would then eventually say to us, sorry, we're not working with you. We can't be sustainable if we don't have the resources and somebody in that particular place that would help us achieve our goals. We had a strategic goal planning session, which included the discussion of this, the development of this climate sustainability plan. How are we going to implement it? I don't see Director Biscorna doing all of these things. And over and over, and it's not just him. Since last year, previous year, a number of people have said to us that we are understaffed. And because we are understaffed, they cannot accomplish some of their goals. This is one way in which we're trying to take care of that. So I don't see, if, you know, and the manager says to us, it is salary and benefits. And so elsewhere, I think the salary. And so elsewhere, I think the salary at 100 plus is comparable for, you know, given what this person is about to do, will have to do. I, I, I do think, I think we need to fund this. I, you know, I am strongly in support. And, you know, Commissioner Bush, yes, I am biased. Okay, you may not be, I, I, I own it. I acknowledge, I'm, I'm biased in this area.
Commissioner Rollins?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Any other members of the commission who'd like to speak at this time? Seeing none. Is there a motion on the table? Would anyone like to make a motion at this time?
I move that we direct staff to execute a budget amendment for, do I have to give the number? For no more than, no, for, okay, for no more than $100,000 to establish a sustainability coordinator position under the heading of Parks and Recreation.
Second.
Okay. There is a motion by Commissioner Bush and a second by Commissioner Rollins. All those in favor of the motion and creating the position would indicate by saying aye. If, at this time, if you are in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 I apologize, it's getting a little late and I worded that a little poorly. I lost it myself. All those opposed to the motion, please indicate by saying nay.
Nay.
Thank you. Motion passes six to one. That brings us to the end of the new business section, our agenda, and into announcements on city-related issues and new business. Commissioner Al Sager?
I realize that this is gonna be our last meeting with Commissioner Zhang since we have an election coming up, and I just want to say thank you for your service.
Yeah, thank you. Yes, yes. Commissioner Bush?
I was going to speak to the farmer's market. Definitely the time of year to attend. And this week, Michigan Farmers Association is going to be conducting a rapid market assessment survey to kind of evaluate people's experience at the farmer's market. I do also want to state that I know we executed a little change in the way parking was accomplished at the farmer's market in terms of gates being open and, and easier parking. And I think parking is going a lot smoother for the Thursday parking this year, in my opinion. I'm not sure if you've, yeah. Okay, good. And then likewise, then the following week is actually National Farmer's Market Week, and there are going to be special market activities on the Thursday and Saturday markets.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Ekke?
I'm gonna begin by saying thanks to Director Biscorner for Parks and Rec. We actually have beautiful park system and, you know, I, I walk the, you know, the trails. So if you haven't been doing it, if you're able to do it, please do it. You know, it's been hot, but you can just go early in the morning so that you don't pass out. But so thank you, thank you for maintaining our park system. I want to say also join Commissioner Al Sager in thanking Commissioner John Zhang for his commitment to the city. I realize that we often don't, you know, agree on things, but I appreciate your perspective because it's helped us think about, you know, decisions that we have made. And that's what's important, that we have, you know, multiple perspectives so that we can have informed conversation. And you have brought that, you know, to this particular commission. So thank you very much. And lastly, Director Lauria, what is the audience on all these trash cans that are still out there? It's Monday. Why are there trash cans? I mean, so what do we, I, I thought we had some conversation about when the trash cans need to be moved. I'm not worried about it sitting next to people's homes, but they are, I, I see them on the streets, so I, I don't know. We need to have a conversation about, about those, because for me, they are ISO, right? So we really need to do something about that. If people are not taking their trash cans in, you know, we need to figure out what's going on or how to address that. And maybe it is, you know, here it is, please, 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 once, you know, Granger picks up your trash, it is your responsibility to take your trash cans back in. It's not Granger's responsibility. If you need help, let us know. Thank you.
And I'll also mention to code enforcement, put a focus on that, you know, in this time of year with long grass and other things that they're doing, you know, a gentle reminder is, is sometimes needed. So I will make sure to do that.
Thank you. Let's see, Commissioner Burschbacher?
I would like to remind people that because of the heat, it is very important to stay hydrated, stay inside. If you, and I will say this all through the summer, if you are walking your dog, please do not walk them on the hot pavement for more than maybe 10 minutes. Make sure that they are able to get on grass or dirt. Pavement can burn the bottom of their paws so quickly and you don't, and your dog's not going to, they can't say, hey, mom, I don't want to walk on the pavement anymore. I mean, they just stop walking. Sometimes they just sit down. So, you know, pay attention to that also, any animals that you have outside, refreshing their water at all times, as well as making sure that you are drinking plenty of water during this, during the hot season.
Thank you. Commissioner Rollins?
Nothing.
Okay.
For myself, a couple of things. First, again, I'd like to, being your first time serving this evening at our meeting, City Clerk Holly Schmelzer, thank you for being here and sticking with us as we go back and forth over all our different topics. Wishing you and your team the best of luck with the election. That is gonna be on August 5th. We have two city commission candidates on the ballot, Seth Blackie and Ryan Skolitsky. You can go to Michigan, or MI.gov/vote for information on registration and your ballot. And along with that, again, I'd like to echo some of the comments from my other fellow commissioners. Commissioner Zhang, thank you for your service these past months. You stepped up when we had an unexpected vacancy, and I think you pushed us and like, again, it, I appreciate the work you're doing. As Vice Mayor Ekke pointed out, sometimes a different perspective causes us to do better in our position. So it challenges us and it forces us to address why we're working the way we are. So I wanted to offer that thanks for your service as well. So appreciate you, John.
Let's see. All right, Commissioner Zhang?
This is my last meeting as a city commissioner. And it's been an honor to serve with the commission. Being a commissioner is not an easy job. I respect all the commissioners, past and present, for the work they have done on behalf of the city. I especially, especially recognize and thank the current mayor, who has worked tirelessly to keep the commission working together for the public good. I want to thank the residents, many of whom have contacted me to express their wishes and desires, and those who sought my support on issues near and dear to their heart. I wish to thank the employees, past and present, who work each day to make the city a great place to live, visit, and call home. I became interested in what is happening in our workforce even before I was appointed to the city commission. I heard stories from current and former employees. It referenced the turnover. Over 30 employees have left, and that represents over 500 years of institutional knowledge and experience. To be fair, a few left for reasons not related to top management. City, the city commission found out too, but they did not talk directly to employees, former employees. They voted to take an employee survey. The survey was finally taken, and the city hired the reputable firm Epic MRA. This is my last meeting as a city commissioner, so I want to tell you what I know so far. Please understand, the survey is not finalized yet. For the survey, 84 current and 11 former employees participated in the survey. Note, the city took action to discourage former employees' participation, but the representative sample size of current and former employee groups was sufficient to make the data statistically valid. I thank those current and past employees for giving important feedback to the city commission. In the survey, 49% of current employees and 100% of former employees would not recommend the city a Mount Pleasant to friends and family as a good place to work. Personal comment from me is the survey is telling us that half the employees feel bad enough about their employer that they would not even recommend it to their friends and family. The survey, in the survey, when asked later in the survey, question number 40, why would you not recommend working for the city? The top reason was management, followed by low morale. 59, 59% of the survey respondents rated the overall direction of the city negatively. My comment on that is that's almost 60% saying we are headed in the wrong direction. The survey showed that there are not significant issues with satisfaction with current position, pay, benefits, sick time, work-life balance, growth opportunities, coworkers, immediate supervision. All those topics received positive reviews. Let me repeat that. Employee survey showed, the employee survey showed that were not significant issues with satisfaction with current position, pay, benefits, sick time, work-life balance, growth opportunities, coworkers, immediate supervisors, as they all received positive reviews. So my comment would be, these are topics that would drive ratings down, but, but not here. These are not problems. The survey goes on to show the primary reason for dissatisfaction was top management. For grading on, in the survey, for grading of, for, on truthfulness and honesty of management, 40% of respondents gave management a negative rating. My comment would be, it's hard to follow leaders and have effective organization if you not, if you do not believe them to be truthful and honest. Employees will not always like management decisions, but they expect and deserve honesty and truthfulness. The survey said that more than one-third, 37% of employees, say management does not care about employees. The survey said that 12% of current employees and 82% of former employees felt women were treated different than men. My comment on that, this is gender bias. It's telling me that there is discrimination based on gender. To have 12% of the workforce feel that there is bias or discrimination is not acceptable. While 12% is unacceptable, let me put that 12% into perspective. Only 29% of all survey responders were women. If women were the gender feeling bias or discrimination, and women were only making up, were the only ones making the bias claim, then the survey numbers would mean that more than 40% of women claimed gender bias. Nearly half, 48%, the survey says, of all employees say senior management does not communicate goals and objectives effectively. My comment is that this is the job of the city manager to ensure it happens. It is not happening. The survey says that while communication and work environment within departments was rated favorably, communication between departments was 58% negative. And that's almost 60% negative. This too is the city manager's job. The survey says that nearly half of all employees, 46% of, and of current and former, viewed employee morale negatively. My comment is that this too is responsibility of the city manager. If the morale on a Navy ship was this low, there would be, soon be a new captain. The survey said 63% of those surveyed gave negative ratings for the city's labor relations with the union and the union employees. My comment, well, al- almost two-thirds gave a negative rating, two-thirds. The city manager may contend that immediately after negotiation is a bad time to take a survey. And I can tell you that this was a problem before negotiations started. I can tell you that negotiations are over, and many of the bargaining unit employees, the union employees, continue to work here and will continue to work here for a long time. You can't live with nearly two-thirds of the union employees feeling this way. The responsibility for this negative relation rests with our leader, the city manager. And when I said almost two-thirds, you gotta remember that it was two-thirds of all those surveyed, which included the non-union people. I'd like to think, I, I, I would probably estimate that number a lot closer to 100%, but I don't know the, the percent of bargaining unit employees in the city. When asked the main, the survey, when asked the main reason for the negative ratings with the labor relations, the number one reason was city manager, followed by such reasons as lack of transparency, low morale, dishonesty, and lack of quality staff retention, replacement. Employees are leaving. The primary reason spells out specifically, pointing the finger at the city manager. But the other reasons are also the responsibility of the senior, of the city manager. When asked if former employees would return to employment with the city, 89% would not. In the survey, when, when employees were asked, what is the main reason why you intend to leave or have left your employment with the city? The top main reason was city manager. I could come, my comment about this. The second part of the survey will contain written comments by employees and past employees that will, I expect, add emphasis and specifics to the information I have given today. Employees can, can do nothing about their leader if they think he is bad for the organization other than tell the people who control the leader's employment, this city commission. If the leader of an organization has lost the respect of his employees, the organization will not be effective as it should be. That is when elected officials must act. The city manager will tell you that the results are typical of an organization. I tell you, they are not typical of a good organization. The manager, manager will tell you that the results are caused, caused from leadership change. I will tell you that did not happen in past administrations, or for that many, matter, any organization with good leader. The survey does not say the city manager is a bad person, but just because one might be a good person does not mean the person is a good leader. In my opinion, any manager with similar feedback would be replaced immediately. The survey lays bare the leadership inadequacy of the city manager. Certainly, no reputable company would hire someone has ratings as low on lack of management skills and leadership ability as this survey does. It is proper to wait for the finalized survey before making a decision. But if the survey remains as bad, or as I expect becomes worse, I hope and expect that the city commission will take appropriate action. Thank you.
Commenting on that, the city has engaged Epic MRA to conduct and has conducted a fairly thorough survey of our city staff. We have received excellent responses.
We have received excellent responses, uh, excellent response rate, um, from the, from our staff. And we have a wide range of results and a lot of information to process. And as Commissioner Zhang has pointed out several times in his comments, we have yet to receive our final report, um, and final analysis also of those results with additional background information and, um, context that was provided, um, to the survey company. We will be receiving that soon, um, and we will be working on that to address any issues and improve our organization. And I think I can speak on behalf of, a unique time, I can speak on behalf of our entire commission that there is always room for growth, there is always room to improve, and we will continue to pursue that always. Um, and so we will take any feedback that we receive seriously and hopes to address it. Um, working in this particular situation, having worked fairly closely with Manager DeSens over the past several months now, more than several at this point. But, um, we have, uh, gone over a range of topics, um, and I have been, I have been supported, uh, like, found a lot of support from, from the manager. Um, and I would offer that same, the same level of support and professionalism that we received there. Um, so again, if there are any issues out there, um, I think that city leadership can work as a unit and as a team to address any outstanding issues. Manager DeSens.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just say I look forward to Epic M R A's presentation of the statistical data because I think that there were some inaccuracies or misrepresentations which were just read off here. So I look forward to the statistical experts coming forward to be able to discuss with the community what the results of the survey really were and what they feel that it means. Um, I understand that, uh, there are some concerns that have been raised here and I fully acknowledge that. As you had said, Mayor, that there's always room for improvement, there's always room for growth. Um, but I believe it's also important to not treat this data as a tool for, for any sort of personal tax. Instead, this should be a tool for constructive improvement. It's also worth noting that there are many areas within the survey which yielded positive results, such as eighty-eight percent of the current workforce plans on continuing to work for the city for the foreseeable future. I think that's a very positive indicator there. The vast majority of individuals want to stay with the commit, or with the city and continue to contribute to its success. I'm committed to using feedback as an opportunity to strengthen our culture, improve our communication and enhance trust across the organization. I'm open to accountability and I welcome collaboration with the commission on meaningful steps forward. But for the sake of staff morale and public confidence, I hope we can avoid framing this data in a way that targets individuals and instead, we focus on moving forward as a team. As public officials, we have a responsibility to move this, to model the kind of leadership we expect from our organization. That includes taking tough feedback seriously, but also treating each other and our staff with professionalism and respect.
Thank you, Manager DeSens. All right, at this time, um, we will move into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. If there's any members of the public who would like to step forward and give comments on any topic that they would like to speak on, please, um, move up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. I ask that you state your name and address for the record. If you are on Zoom, please use the raised hand feature to indicate that you would like to speak. Got to work on those punch cards.
Uh, Bill Gerstner, one-five-one-four, Gaylord Street. Uh, I, I do a lot, lot of walking on the sidewalks. I will just note, we seem to have a major issue with a lot of the block by, by bushes growing over them, so they're not accessible. I've got some elderly neighbors that have a very difficult time using the sidewalks, kind of thing. I'm wondering if maybe, you know, somehow we can start finding property owners. I have been, you know, the areas I, I walk, I'm trimming, and I know there are other areas, kind of thing. And if you guys want to make some money for the city, start finding the property owners who not maintain the sidewalks. And then I also go to stairs, like, like the, like, they're, they're not even, I'll say that, I just think they're, they think, kind of things, so they're a tripping hazard again for, for my neighbors.
Gotcha. Thank you, Bill.
And then I'll also note, uh, the presentation with, you know, all the act, actuary stuff, can't read it. And I'm just, you guys can read it, but yeah, no one else could follow what was going on and no one else could see, see it was simple.
Thank you. Is there any other members of the public who'd like to give comment at this time? Is there anyone on Zoom? Any emails? Gotcha. With that, I will close, um, public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Let's see. What time is it? It is nine forty-nine right now. Um, we have a closed session still on the agenda. Let's see.
I move that we go into closed session pursuant of Section eight H of the Open Meetings Act to consider material subject to attorney-client privilege.
Thank you, Commissioner Bershberger. There is a motion and a second to go into closed session. Um, going into closed session, I believe we need a roll call vote. Clerk Schmelzer, if you would take the roll, please.
Commissioner Bersh- Bershberger?
Yes.
Commissioner Zhang?
Yes.
Commissioner Rollins?
Yes.
Commissioner Alsager?
Yes.
Commissioner Bush?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Eke?
Yes.
Mayor Wingard?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, we are going to be going into closed session. If you are a member of the public or staff who need to exit, please do so at this time. Um, let's see, we will resume.
Let's take a five-minute recess.
Yeah, let's take a five-minute recess. Um, so we'll resume at nine fifty-five, giving us time to move out.